I very like to call this meeting to order. Please don't leave without meeting us.
Let the allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation under God, in the midst of all the moving changes of the world.
Hold on.
Betafer.
Present.
Dubey.
Present.
Holstein.
Present.
Yaris.
Here.
Rebisch here. Poocher.
Present.
Anderson absent. Excuse. Excuse.
Are there any additions or license changes to the agenda? Seeing that any motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those. Motion carries. Any comments? Anyone who'd like to adjust the order about the agenda? Anyone? Alrighty. Uh, let's see. I have item P on here. Yes, I'm just gonna guess. Saying we've checked all my guests. So, uh, the Internet ISD, uh, would like to present the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Poocher.
It's you.
Welcome back. It's good to be back. It's the first time I've been on the other side of the table and it's all here. But no, it is good to be back. And I'm coming today and there's a list of items that I put out for you. I'm gonna go through some of these, of this list, but my CFO, Julie Mazza, is gonna go through the actual budget. You know, I couldn't go through a meeting without talking a little bit. So, just wanna kinda hit a few of these things. It goes over some of the services Bayern Act provides. And, uh, just wanna kinda get hit on a few things. Uh, we're big, uh, second bullet item is career and technical education. One of the things we're looking at, talked to the superintendents, is, uh, for our Career Center, we're looking at potentially doing a new program. We, we closed down our Autobody, will be our last year for Autobody. And then, um, Small Lnc had closed two years ago, three years ago. But we brought back cybersecurity and we are looking to add another program. But we put out some surveys, we're talking to students and, and, uh, teachers throughout the ISD, so next year will be a plan here. And then we should have a new, uh, product, um, program in 24, 25. Uh, the survey that we originally did talk about, there was some interest in, um, more medical field careers. There were interest in things like cybers, not cyber, but, uh, supply chain management logistics is really big now. And it's one of the programs that's, has to be on the top 50. So it has to CTE, in order to have a program, it has to fit into Mr. Dubey's though, gotta be in a, in a category of jobs that are in high demand. And even the aviomics and control ground, that's a big, um, that's a big need right now. So I'll keep you posted as we move forward with that process. We've kind of done a relaunch on our early middle college. I know we've had a couple of people talking to our counselors at the high school and, uh, principal of the room. So we're trying to get more word out so we can build that early middle college program. And, um, Mr. Paul checking comment, I mean, all that, there's been some confusion, but we're trying to kind of break it out and we are looking at, um, we did a presentation to allow for that, those students who don't get the, the associate's degree in, in, uh, four years, that they don't get penalized. Just did this before that recently. So moving forward on that front. Neighbor Imagination Library has, uh, one of the things that we've done, those are books from zero to five. We are in, in, basically the people who coordinate that process with Alton Burton. Uh, we are having some trouble with funds for that program. And we did some, uh, actually some of the locals that had taken in for the, for the books to continue. I did see it in a government budget. And it's also in the House, uh, House budget, which that money will go to ISD and somebody be able to, about eight, eight books books. About 7,000 here, eight books right now. Uh, we do, at the ISD, we do a lot of collaborative meetings with superintendents, business managers, principal council, tech directors. That's been a focus this year and well, technology's met quite a bit more. Um, businesses got together and we meet monthly at superintendents and principal councils will always call the tenant. Um, not gonna go down this road too much longer, but one of the things about the halfway down district improvements for our district center, uh, series of money tip. And I know that'd be wrong with, I know that we have somebody in our social service department who comes up and actually works with your staff. Um, Michelle Roy, that's been a very successful, uh, process to the school improvement. And she kind of built that capacity from within the IS, uh, within the districts and she kind of pulls away. Our GSRP programs, we, we have to coordinate the funding for that. And I know there's a couple of GSRP, uh, questions sort of taking time and I think I've seen a little too many times. Towns together, just wanna get down to this real quick and I'll let, uh, Julie go to, um, to the budget. Towns together is the teacher apprenticeship model that the ISD have gotten into working with, um, with a $48 RIS in the state. And that really is gonna build a network of teachers in it. And there's, there's still a little bit of a, uh, a gray area on growing their own grants. The state has not released that money. But the towns together is gonna look for, um, the department of labor money if they don't get, that's a segment, and they burn the towns together. And you want, well, say you're on the D.
Yeah, yeah. The ISD.
So you're very much involved towns together? No? Okay, well, we got somebody called the master and that can go around and talk to different districts and whatnot. I'll, I'll, I'll just sit in the booth there. But then it involves the teachers to go over the apprenticeship model to get their teaching credentials. And they get all the, uh, schooling paid for, full seats. And actually, when they establish the apprenticeship model, the, uh, district will have master teachers who will get a little stipend so that if they take on an apprentice teacher, they get a little more money. So it's just, it's really kind of a deep process and we're, we're excited to be part of that. We pulled up the legislature meetings, we had one just a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, I think we went really well. Our whole, we tried to manage the legislature, everyone's there and the Internet needs resources and, and definitely wanna work with, with our local legislators. I know the last two years we have been this, um, we haven't had a little partnership, but I think we're gonna reach out to them. Um, this is to finish up, we're still, we have career and aviators that get out to the, to the locals, which is a big help to, for the career development. I know, um, we're gonna say, remain active. Is it remaining here? Yeah, we're getting it on my job. Getting all EDPs. So that is my, my field. If you have any questions for me, I'm definitely gonna be able to answer them. But if you want to, if you have any questions, we can either answer one of your questions. Thank you. Thank you. If you want to incredibly choose that sign last week for the national signing day for the apprenticeship, I don't know if you caught up with that, but it was a great event.
Good evening. Well, I'm the new face. Um, I've just been with the Bayern Act since August, so I hope to see any time that this really started. Uh, a little bit of a background on me. As a director, I guess I've been playing instructor for 15 years. And then prior to that, I was at a local school for three years. And then before that, I was a lobby manager with CPA roles. So, uh, so when I come to be here, um, we are required by law to come out to the locals to submit our budget for the general fund budget. And then the locals, um, need to either support it or disapprove of it by June 1st. So we're here to review it and answer any questions you might have. So the ISD has the general fund, the sublet fund, the career center fund, student activity fund. We have one that serves this fund. And our best service fund will, uh, be paid off because of the year 27. And then we have four capital bonds as well. So, good evening, this is early, a little bit tricky. Um, we actually had to have this done in January, March. So, um, I thought that I would do a little, a little bit of what I said about the emergency proposal for next school year. Uh, because that's really all the information we have at this point in time. And the items that I listed are specifically to ISDs, but other than doing a capital student speaking out in mind. Uh, so early literacy is, that's the one new time funding to all the system destruction. And that's actually for the district and the ISDs. GSRP, the evaluation for per pupil is expected to go up. And then also on top of that, the per pupil evaluation for transportation. We have not seen an increase of that in almost two years. And then the early child support grants, uh, increasing the program began, hopefully, this year. There's some new ones in London, and one in, and for the district for Jan, IISD, for an academic. Really hoping people come through on that. Um, I'm gonna make specifying, hoping that I get a decision. So I'm thinking of the literacy, the early literacy that we've dealt with the last few years, where the state has given us some money for coaches. Hoping that we'll start with an academic. And then the 31N status, the mental health money that we've been, uh, hearing about for the last several years, not knowing what's the spectrum for the future. Uh, is still around and it is increasing, uh, again, so that's very promising. And then the Dolly Parton imagination library fund that is distributed just so well to, uh, would be for ISDs to help with that. And that would be, you're very welcome. For the literacy competitions that I mentioned, there is an increase for coaches. And then I, um, also this is a question, addition of the one coach for the year as well. And then some money for early literacy hub, and some early on increases. But the legislation, we got a very nice increase this past year. Uh, very welcome, it was very much needed. And, uh, we're hoping that we get another increase for next year. For the career center, uh, there's not a lot of additional funding that ISD that we have. And the ISD general operations dollars are increasing by, by percentage in the budget. There's the new ones in funding written in for the district and the ISDs to underwrite all the cyber security risks that happens. Um, which is very irritating, that they would give us some money to help with that. A lot of schools have committed over the past two years, uh, threats. And so to do some of that, it's, it's gonna get us up in the right direction. School safety, uh, ISDs were not written in to any of that funding. And some of the others' proposals include ISDs. Adult education, uh, is, is big in this county. It was really nice to see, it was something new for me. Uh, and there's increases in that funding as well. And then there's certain parts of the retirement system that schools start to get money for that ISDs did not get. And so, uh, the governor has ISDs written in to that as well. And then a few things that the governor is probably going to remove is grow your own funding, the trails funding, uh, career centers receive some improvement and retention money. And that will be removed. And then also school resource officers. So in the fiscal year 24 budget, the volume of D, um, some of the assumptions we used was to set property tax increase, uh, some of the waiting type increases that are already in our contracts. And then we removed a lot of our one-time funding, uh, which includes our, our, um, ARP dollars, trails, the CTE redemption grant. And of course, we're removing any one-time purchases and we remain glad on the majority of our resources. So then here is a snapshot, very, very high level of our general fund budget. Um, so at the end of next school year, we are expecting a bond balance of 25%, which is showing that we're nice and healthy. Um, I really like to see that balance for an ISD specifically over 20%. So I'm pleased with that number. Um, a few programs that are specifically housed in J door within the general fund include the GSRP, the instructional service programs, adult ed, mental health, early childhood, and everything that's total wellness days and grant. And then for capital projects, um, that's associated with the general fund, we do have plans for technology and security updates. Um, the new roofing is actually starting, it's all set up in our parking lots. Um, and then also parking lot maintenance are needed. Our special education, uh, budget is projected to be at 22% at the end of next school year. Again, another, um, healthy look. And we're hoping that the additional funding I was expecting comes in and it will be in a better than that, so. And, uh, some of the programs that are housed in the special education fund include our LLC day programs, our, uh, super programs that are housed here at the AAs, juvenile offenders, speech therapy, health, OCT, social, psychologists, teacher consultants, and special education days for children. And then our special capital projects, um, will be paying for some of the security and stuff that are needed, um, also some new roofing, uh, in the HX system. And then our career center budget at the end of next fiscal year is expected to be right around 20% bond balance. And the only program changes in CTE include the removal of the perimeter repair program that is reviewed earlier. And the capital projects on the career center has pretty much been, um, replenished with all the things that they have to deal with the last few years. Um, we had air cameras that used up the remaining balance in this current fiscal year. And so we do have some technology and security updates that have to take place this next school year and will be utilized in our regular budget to have. That concludes the conversation, we're ready for questions for... Out of us.
It's my question. My home. So the special ed and education budget, and the general fund budget.
Well, they're actually separate. Yeah, so like a local school, um, special education is included right in that budget. Ours are actually completely separate and independent of this. So the budget that you'll be going on is really just a digital fund. And then the special ed and the center and the capital projects are all integrated for you.
Okay. So never really had any government.
No, no, they're completely separate.
It's simple. Any other questions? Can you get, we have a lot of students in the administration.
Um, they hold our GSRP grant and then it flows through to us. So if they get an increase, we'll get an increase. We do get GSRP transportation funding, that's your preschool.
That's, yeah, so parents are clear, we're not getting any transportation for, for students.
Not additional.
No, we have to request, I mean, we put in a request and if they have enough.
Yes.
Yeah, the transportation actually goes to help support the transportation costs that are paid for by this, right?
That's not our local bus, that's the GSRP only.
Right.
That's not all the others.
Right, right, just the preschool, right.
We'd love to get some for our general.
Right, wouldn't that be nice?
Some of the, also the Senate, they did got some transportation proposals and I hope it's not happening. But they also have rural, rural district dollars, which I think can kind of raise isolated districts, which kind of, you can use that money for transportation. But there are some talk about some categoricals for transportation. How you keep them in a little, if I see any?
That's always been a challenge, right? The rural districts have four times the budget of a urban school, they get the fund bound. It's, it's for the opposite of the second.
You need the same amount, they're already, well, you said, where do we get it from? Yeah, well, I'll keep, uh, there has been some discussion and the good thing about right now, I, I sit on a government relations board down, and I go to Lansing and actually this Wednesday I'll be down there. I'll see if there, if there's any traction on that, on those transportation dollars. But there is, there have been some bills that are to set a good target, transportation. And it depends on ratio, the formula, how, how rural, how many miles, how many students. So I can get that information as well too.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Yeah.
Do you mind if we add to the agenda maybe before the spark spotlight to sort them out for this month? Trevor, everybody put them up, April. That'd be okay before?
Have to. I'm just, if anybody wants them. Yeah, we can throw that in there.
Okay, thank you.
Tom's grumpy, he wants to go home.
Only a two-hour run, please.
Believe me, you won't get that hard, I'll adjourn. So we will start then, uh, with the spark spotlight with Ms. Westalla.
Good evening. Um, this month's spark spotlight is Ms. Luann Grove from Lynnwood Elementary. Ms. Lu is the school secretary, but she's so much more than that. Ms. Lu is a heart of Lynnwood Elementary. She has the wealth of knowledge that only one can have remaining with her 29 years. She is full of love and joy and she treats all the students as if they were her own grandchildren with compassion, empathy, love. She is dedicated and selfless and she'll do anything for anyone. She treats the staff and parents with respect and kindness and always has a smile on her face when she breaks through. I'm amazed and humbled every day by the compassion and pride she shows being a Lynnwoodine. If you know Lu, you know she's not here for the athletes. That's why she's not here. Uh, she's here for the students, staff, and the school community. And I'm honored to be working with her. Your may spark spotlight, Luann.
Thank you. All right, Kyle? Spark of the month?
Pardon? All right, so our student of the month for the month of April is Carson Nelson. He was nominated by Mr. Cramperby. Uh, Mr. Cramperby says that Carson had the highest test score, not one, not two, but the best three science tests, um, in his science class. Carson's always participating in class, is a positive classroom. Your student of the month for the middle school for the month of April, Carson Nelson.
Followed parents back as you.
Uh, next up is Claire Donovan, who's our student of the month for month of April over at high school. Uh, Claire was nominated by Ms. Maxwell. And Ms. Maxwell says that Claire's been successful all year, both in and out of the classroom. While earning all his in school, she's a level 10 gen, 10 gens, training 22 hours per week and has qualified for the national championships this month in Oklahoma City. So it's amazing accomplishment and of course, Claire's gonna be here today because she has a prize. So your student of the month for the month of April, Claire Donovan. Thank you, thank you.
It's hard to get to that ranking.
Uh, yeah, from all time to the highest ranking.
Yeah.
All right, uh, consent agenda. Any motion to approve the consent agenda and pay the bills? 633,799, I got 31 cents.
Motion for sport and discussion.
Okay.
Vote in the votes, vote in the votes. Any discussion? Hold on, hold on.
Betafer?
Yes.
Dubey?
Yes.
Holstein?
Yes.
Yaris?
Yes.
Rebisch?
Yes.
Poocher?
Yes.
Six zero.
There is? Mr. Holstein?
Thank you. Well, let's start off, um, it's kind of interesting because they had brought up the 31N mental health, uh, people that help us in their presentation. And I did wanna talk about that a little bit. Um, we have 31N people that help our students. And I wanted to give you a little idea of what they do because I think sometimes we're not sure we have all these numbers and it's not even a title, you know, the 31N, um, person. So what they do is they help our students that are looking for the help for mental health. Um, a lot of times we have students with IDPs that can get some extra support in the general ed struggle to get that at times. So the 31N counselor is there to help them. And I think the confusing thing is sometimes we may think, or parents may think that it's almost like an administrative position where if somebody comes to them and says they're bullying, or if there's an issue that they're gonna go out and then get another student and talk, and that's not what they do. They're there to help the single student that's having the situation. Um, and they are not pulling people in that don't want to be pulled in. Administrators do that, our behavior interventionists can do that. But they're there to help that student with stress, anxiety, and all these other mental health things that we have. So I did ask for some numbers and I wanted to give you those. Uh, we have Ms. Mays in the middle in high school and also at Central Elementary and then Ms. Ross at Lynnwood Elementary. And they have seen 153 students that received some type of service, uh, from mental health this year. Uh, individual therapy sessions, 356 times they've talked to our students. Crisis response, which means there needs to be immediate support, seven times. Um, brief interventions, student support 149 times. Formal meetings with a parent, guardian, or staff, 56. Um, students that received a screener to see if they needed more. Mental health support was 55. And, uh, 64 students had a plan of care developed. So you can see that they're doing a lot of things to help our students. And it's, it's really great that we have them in our buildings. And I just wanted to pass that along, some of those numbers for, for you to get an idea of what our 31N counselors are doing. Any questions about that? Okay. Um, school resource officers. I met with, um, our city manager and, uh, chief police last week. And they are for next year requiring us, if we are choosing them to be the school resource officer, to be a full-time 40, for 40 hours a week position. Where right now it is about 19 hours a week here. And at Lynnwood, they also have two to three hours a day. It's more of a full year, um, thing, but it averages out like two or three hours per day there. So around 10 hours at Lynnwood. Um, so that's gonna be a big decision for us. I mean, if we do go with that, it's, you know, the cost will probably be two or three times what we pay now. Um, I do know that there are other options that I'm looking at. I wanted you to also know that. Like I checked with, uh, armed security guards services that are out there. Um, it'd be about half the cost, but I think they would not be able to do the things that we like, where they're in the classrooms, they're giving programs, they're doing different things. They're in the parking lots helping kids. Um, so that would be an issue with that. And then also I've contacted the county sheriff because we do have them, uh, help us in Lynnwood. And I wanna see, you know, talk about pricing and options available. If maybe there's one full-time person that can go back and forth or if they just have another person that can come here. Uh, I haven't heard back from them. I've, I've been able to, haven't been able to reach them yet. Uh, but I plan on getting ahold of them this week, uh, hopefully to hear if there's some options that we can do with that also. So, and I do know some districts around us within our county do that, where they have a school resource officer for their district. And then they kind of bounce around from building to building. That is an option. Uh, but we have to see what our needs are, what we want. And I'll be bringing that to you guys as we get more information on it. Any questions?
Do you, so they want a full-time person? Do they give you a kind of estimate of what they think that might cost?
Yeah, they did. Um, and oh, please, I didn't put that in here. Uh, it was, I think it was, was it 80 or 90,000? 85, 85,000 that it would cost us, um, to do that, so.
What are the organization that share our buildings? That they're paying a portion of that because they're in, that includes office ships? Being in their building as well as?
Well, it would be our buildings. It would be Lynnwood.
Across the road.
Advancement Academy, us.
So the ISD's in there?
I don't know.
So would they help me?
Good question.
And Lynnwood as well?
Yeah.
To the opposite serving of students.
Right, the city can't go to Lynnwood, but the county could. That, that's where we'd have to go to a county sheriff to have all of us. Um, but if it was this position, we would have to have our city police.
City can't go to Lynnwood? You know, he's, I'm trying to with the school.
It's our understanding that's out of their jurisdiction.
They told us that they can't go.
So if we went with this new person for the pin counting schools through the city, he would not be able to go?
No, so we would have to have full-time here and then also pay for Lynnwood through the county like we do now.
Did they say anything that, if we did that, we're contracted forty hours? That person not allowed to go on patrol?
Correct, it's a full-time us, it, it's just for us.
Okay.
Yeah, but it would be only for, you know, central, us, advancement academy.
Well, I'm just looking at.
Right.
Basically, we're hiring one and they're going to utilize them for patrols?
Yeah, no, no, that would be all us.
You said, said, contract, I can't remember. If that was just in a dispel, I don't think it was.
Well, for the new one?
Yeah.
That's what they just told me. Now, could they say emergencies again, they're going to be pulled off?
I thought that was in there, that if there was emergency, they can.
Yeah. I would think that that would be the same. Yeah. So, just wanted to inform you on that, that that's a pretty big change that we're going to be looking at. Weeks, and they would like an order we do in order to be able to hire and get that person in.
So, Lynnwood, we're hiring somebody, so we pick the person, you know which option's going to be, other qualifications?
Didn't, didn't talk about that, it's their person, so that's something that we can talk about if we're part of that.
At a certain level of.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
But they're, they're going to be hired through the city, so.
Yeah, it's the city's hired.
Dealing with the city, my estimate is that.
We will not.
They choose the person. We may be involved in the interviews if we want, but I, I don't even know that. Because again, they're going to be responsible for everything else, but. So, we'll have to look at that, but yes, definitely get options, please.
Yeah, that's what I, I am doing right now. YouTube monthly preview, I did recent last week, added the, the May preview on YouTube, and we so far had our highest number. There were a hundred and eleven views this past week, and it's just a preview of things that are happening throughout the month. I know we do the weekly update on our Facebook page, and that goes out in the high school as well, the Facebook pages. But this is more, you know, extended, and I want parents to know what's coming up three weeks from now and not spring it on them, you know, a day before it happens. We're on a Friday, and this thing's next Monday, so. But I just wanted to let you know that that is there, they're usually about ten minutes long. This past show that we had, we did have interviews with our musical director and an AP student who happens to be here in our, in our audience, who was the star of our YouTube show. So, it's great information for students and parents to kind of get an inside look at some of the things that are happening in our school. Couple other extra things, chief science officer, this is something that's been happening around the Great Lakes Bay region where two middle school, two high school students are able to be part of this chief science officer program, and they meet throughout the year, they go to really cool science STEM-type places of business. I know one time they went to the Milwaukee Bridge because there's actually offices within the bridge, and they got to climb around with car hats on and see all the engineering-type things like that. But the main thing is that they bring the STEM things back to us, that they're kind of that, that middle man between the, the science and the outside world and then bringing it into our school, and they do some really cool things for us. So, we're in the process of doing that. Next Monday is the mental health webinar, our second one, and again, this is free for our parents. It's an anonymous login on Zoom where people don't know who is on it, and it is called Your Child's Anxiety on Monday, and this has been a huge issue over the last few years, so I hope that is well-attended and our parents get some, some great tips and tricks to help their son or daughter with anxiety. And the final thing is, I learned today, I asked about prom next year. I actually was asking because I'm interested in starting to pull prom back up for our students, and was told that it's possible, they're talking about prom being on a Friday night next year. So, I said, ooh, I want to make sure and bring that to you in case there were any concerns, questions, as well as make sure all students know and are aware that this could be on a Friday in our schools, it could be on Thursday nights, Friday nights, it, it does depend on where you're at your prom, it's just we've never done anything about Saturday. And sometimes change is hard, so. What's that? Friday, a lot of times there's a lot more available because there are weddings and things on Saturdays, and the price is usually quite a bit higher. And the Friday that they were looking at was before Memorial Weekend, where you got the long weekend to, you know, sweep in and. It is a half-day on that day, so kids could go, you know, get their dresses and, or hair done, whatever it may be. On that day, because I know a lot happens, pictures, so the half-day would make that work, but. There, no contracts have been signed, I just wanted to bring it to you in case you hear like, ooh, that might not be what we want, because if it's not, we go Saturday, and, you know, maybe it's a different day, but pay a little more money. But I wanted to bring it up to you that it's been talked about.
Second of township, that's all that's possible for there, pubs, Fridays, and we have half-day school, and we do PD in the afternoon for staff. Seems, I haven't heard any complaints, so. But you can.
We're going to keep, we're going to keep asking, yeah. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you to report from this side.
Our beginning band for Monday was a success. For around twenty-five students that committed to participating in the middle school beginning band for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. The spring band concert and chorus night will be held on Thursday, May twenty-fifth at seven PM in the middle school gym. Preparations for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four marching season are underway. The halftime show theme will be attributed to the Jackson Five, including the following selections, I Want You Back, I'll Be There, and ABC. Drum major interviews will be conducted on Friday, May twelfth after school, and the chosen students will be announced the following week. Student council will be sponsoring the spring blood drive tomorrow from eight AM until one thirty PM in the school library. Members of the community are encouraged to register for important time at Mercy Luncheon. And to be driven by at least twenty-three kinds of blood, Mercy will donate scholarship money to a graduating senior. The spring awards will be took place on Thursday, May fourth. Highlights included in production of spring varsity athletes, recognition of each member of the class of twenty-twenty-three, and the awarding of the Burke Boston Long Pass and Valley giveaway, which was shared by Jalen May, Frisky. Elections for class officers of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year happen. Each class has a full slate of officers. Interviews for the selected members presented will take place this week. The drama level will present in the musical pieces. The dinner theater on Wednesday, May tenth has sold out. Offer, there are tickets available for the Thursday, May eleventh, Saturday, May thirteenth, and Sunday, May fourteenth shows. Community members are encouraged to come out and watch these talented actors in positions this year's way. The senior breakfast and senior walk will now take place on Friday, May ninth. The date changed with the CD event considering the position of us last year, and then allow seniors to celebrate with their final day of high school in style. The senior breakfast will be required between staff and administrative team. The senior walk will visit liquid elementary, state lines, and then middle school and high school. Seniors will parade the happy gowns and recreate their journey to graduation while providing role models for university students. The Menchonian Ventures will be in industrial art project exits in the regional contests over the weekend. The Menchonian students took first place in every category they have. Not a single Menchonian student project is based behind and not supported by. All twenty projects will be against the state level constitution later this week. Congratulations to Mr. Codman, Mr. Shumari, Mr. Morgan, and our Menchonian students on our job well. Congratulations.
Thank you. Things all around. Report from administration staff.
Hello, we are in all of the, and the state is that I mentioned, so they're senior for success, and really, they're almost done. And instead of inventory, I know that a lot of them are still going strong, it's setting up a time right now for the school. AP tests, and this week, they started last week. Anxiously taking their exam, so really need to see them, I think, get them going and get right out of that as well. One day is our PDD for the district, and we have a security director here to talk about prom and four hundred boxes. Just all around, I think, I hope like, you know, you have everyone together, a couple of apps, or if you're running, just finish line.
Thank you. Other members?
Just a couple things, our LPD is currently selling coupon, so the school will launch here, if anyone is interested, it's still up for sale. They're going for thirty dollars, and it's about thirty-five hundred dollars, if you see. It's interesting to see me at work or. Grabbing a field day on Friday, May nineteenth, should be a lot of fun. Come on down, get some. And then our annual memorial day program will be held on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, that will be fifteen.
Thank you.
There's a lot of things wrapping up. At Central Elementary, first of all, GSRP graduation will be Monday, May fifteenth, six o'clock in the middle school gym. Our fourth graders will be going on the annual road tour, uh, Monday, May fifteenth. Our fifth graders will be having internet safety presentation Friday, May twelfth. Our first graders on Friday, May twelve will be having community vehicle day. Second graders will be heading to Plante Terry by Tuesday, May twenty-third. Kinder arts is going to go to the zoo on Wednesday, May twenty-fourth. And May, May third, our fifth grade will have a send-off day, which is sponsored by our parent group. And it's been one of the coolest things that is happening, that review, as it is pretty good time, Friday, May nineteenth, and it's the senior honor. And it's really true, and it is special to review this.
Thank you. So, there's?
Something else on the athletic side. Live TV, all scramble, so raise money for the athletic department. My name is Perk, and I'm trying to be a, all of our sports teams. Live TV means that may mainly, so I found out the person. So, we're going to have live TV, if you want to play, or if you want to help out, or just, you know. One day, we're just in June, we got that ball coming in, June, tenth, eleventh, I believe, for that day. Just before, I think that Tuesday or Thursday, we have a physical night, so we're going to get all our practice as well, have time, so, that, 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 Facebook. Outside of that, what was my last board meeting? I don't know, so, I just saw a few trials, so, the way they were for trials, I think, three weeks ago today, so, yeah, it's fun, fun, enjoy.
Congratulations. Sweet when you can.
So, yeah, it's really hard to keep track of what happened last week or even what happened today with current things taking hold on. Just want to thank Dr. Raw for taking care of the tasking, it's done really smooth, and it's been really delightful to add that kind of go smoothly. For next week, we do have couple changes, so I know last board meeting I gave a list of senior events, some of those senior events have changed. So, we are going to have senior horse at seven o'clock on the seventeenth. And that'll also be the day for senior exams, first day testing. The eighteenth is the second day for senior exams. And then on that Friday, the nineteenth, senior breakfast, we're going to the elementary walk, it's for safer reference. That's going to be kind of just senior breakfast, get on the bunk, we're going to do a little bit of traveling, and then that's going to be pretty much of the seniors. I would say that ninety-five percent of the seniors will be exiting early with a few things left, I'll say that. Really excited, so, a lot of that, but we're set to get to finish line and kind of give us. Thank you.
I do plan to be there on senior horse night. I've got that in my calendar, so I'll be there for it.
Last thing, Renaissance, next Tuesday, brought my attention, we've gone, we've taken, it's a few years. Trying something different this year, we're going to the carnival type day, so we don't, don't have anything coming in. We have, I think, major related tech type thing coming in, a big blow, what is on the play thing. We have, we're going to save, you put yourself in, you can play a game of football, like kids, like, I think it's like eighteen feet one. We got another one that's like a hundred, oh, you attach yourself, you run it up, you can start that. So, I think you have like ten, you can play things, or maybe you're anything today, so. Open for good while you're next Tuesday.
Thanks. Take notes, everybody?
No, I'm sorry. E-rate approved our project for fiber, so the summer we'll be upgrading the external fiber to ten gig. That's twenty percent of the cost.
You pay for it?
Google?
What's that?
Yes, CC.
Chris, I can only run from you.
Saving mine for close session.
Wardy trainings, do we have any committees meet? I know we had a lot last year. Right, onto the non-consent agenda then. May? Move to adopt a resolution for this. They are, they are an ISD budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. Motion support, carry. Any discussion on that? Also, favor say, ah?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries? I don't D. They move to approve Bayside Builders to install a secure exit at the middle school, high school, or the middle high school area over here at a cost not to exceed forty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, funded by the state school safety grant. A motion? A discussion? We'll call. Second committee looked at that already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Betafer?
Yes.
Yarris?
Yes.
Dubey?
Yes.
Holstein?
Yes.
Ravish?
Yes.
Poocher?
Yes.
Six zero.
Carries, thank you. Public comments, anybody like to address the board?
Hi. Hi, Wood.
Okay.
First, I'd like to address the board in regards to the parent advisory committee that has been established this year at the high school, middle school, parent solutions committee, parent advisory committee, we kind of have two different names for it. We met again today. We have a low attendance at meetings, and I think I mentioned that last board meeting, that the time is a, a huge problem for parents. So, even though we have low attendance physically in the building for that meeting, we have a lot of parents working behind the scenes to establish some good positive feedback, posing the challenges, giving some solutions and things like that. Just to date, we've discussed different surveys that parents would like to see helping create more of that bonding connection between the teachers and administrators and students and parents. So, we've discussed those types of things, so we can get that feedback, both for the teachers and for the parents and administrators to know, you know, what's going on, what's going great, where, where do we need improvement, those types of things. But on that same topic, we have a member who is good friends with a lady at the Michigan Department of Education. She is, I'm going to pull it up, make sure I don't say it incorrectly. She is the district counselor for MDE, and she works on with the social and emotional learning as far as how the adaptation to fit social and emotional learning needs. And she did have some suggestions, and she stated that part of her job is actually to work directly with school administrators at no charge to review policies and workings with, with how things are going, to see that things are actually looking fair. And again, like those surveys, who's going to see those surveys? What are we going to do with it? And is the board open to policy change? So, I strongly encourage Mr. Woodruff, and I strongly encourage you to look into that information more, I just got her information today. Because I think that we don't want to be a stagnant district, I think we want to work towards improvement. We all know that we can improve in many areas, and I think that should be a great resource to the district. And on a side note, so chat here. I, again, you guys know that I'm a big representative for parents in the community. I, again, you guys know that I'm a big representative for parents in the community. We've discussed many times how it's difficult to come to the board meeting and get that dialogue. We're encouraged to go through chain of command, which is great. You know, we're emailing teachers and administrators and superintendent, and then we go to the school board, and it kind of comes back full circle. But we don't feel like there's that dialogue, and I think it's been mentioned before that it'd be awesome to have like a dialogue, top home meeting, but it didn't seem like it was anything that administration or the board was open to, where parents could talk and actually get a response back on certain things. So like right now, I speak, and you guys take any information. So our parent group is actually coordinating our own top home meeting that we would love to invite you to, so you can hear parents speak on the great things and the challenges, and some of those things that we would like to see we're aiming for change, you know, in the future. Because again, if we aren't open to those things, we're not gonna grow as people, we're not gonna grow as a district. And so we don't have a definitive date for that yet, but plan to see that in the next couple of weeks. I know it's a busy time. Different topic, do I commit?
Just, right, real quick.
Okay. So we prepared, we'll send an email out, and we have a date and location for that.
All right, thank you.
There was a... It's hard, I know it's four minutes, but it's a different topic. Isn't anybody else seeing speed?
You have four minutes to address the board on any topic, so that's why we have the...
Actually, it's different topics. I have four minutes per topic.
No, no, you don't.
I'm equal at the...
You have four minutes. You have four minutes to address the board.
Okay.
If you need to, you can talk to one of us or something at the end, okay? Is there anybody else that could address that? Anybody else? All right, discussion items? Let's see the...
The ISD board?
We have all graphic, we don't stand on that? It's over yet?
We... Hey, I'm trying to think, because we talked about the last meeting. I know they came in with the price that 5% more than they did last year. So we already had approved the number.
Already had approved, so I'll add them all forward, yeah.
Unless there's any questions?
Any other discussion items?
Before we make any decision on next year's prom, I think we need to get some information from parents, students.
I did just get an email from our prom coordinator, who said after talking to some parents, I'm looking at May 11th or 18th, which are both Saturdays.
Okay.
It was...
I do not want our students out on the Friday night before Memorial Day weekend.
Yeah.
Not at all.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic on that day. I agree. So it looks like we're okay, but that's not even a question anymore.
Okay, right. We're on the weekend, I have...
Yeah.
So, all right, don't have to worry about it.
Nope.
Other just discussions, we've got the ISD oral election, and then the... Which is, any discussion on that?
We're pretty close, right?
Yeah.
And we did not really know our location today on who will be running, yeah. They were supposed to find out, I believe, this afternoon, and then the ISD will tell us.
To be our representatives.
The Asian man is next.
You did that next one? Okay.
There's to be a discussion.
Today's the discussion, and the next one is...
Solutions on our prom.
Right, that's great. That's her.
All right, any other nominations? All right, other discussion items? All right, we have a full session on the DACA. Going to go to close session? Motion support going to close session, this will be for contract negotiations. We will call them, please.
Beta, Bird?
Yes.
Doobie?
Yes.
Holstein?
Yes.
Yara's? Ravish?
Yes.
Kucher?
Yes.
Six, zero.
Full session concludes our business.